Okay, thank you very much, Brandon. And I see that we do have a quorum presence, so I will declare this meeting open. Before we get started, I'm gonna, I'm going to, and if all of us would mute our telephones that we have with us for the purposes of this meeting unless you're actually using it to talk with, that probably would be beneficial. So, at this point, Brandon, would you say thanks to our good Lord for this meeting?
Yes, sir, let us pray. Dear my Father, thank you for this day, and I just thank you and praise you for your blessings. I just thank you for this time we get together, Lord, and do the work of the city. I just pray that you be with us, and God has protected us, and help us as we make decisions this evening for our Indian, and help us on a national level and state level. I just thank you for this season we're in, and I thank you for this week and this weekend. I just pray your blessings upon us for all things we ask, you know.
We're gonna ask Sonny Proctor if he would to lead us in our pledge of oath. Have we lost Dr. Proctor?
I think he's muted.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag United States.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have the agenda that has been mailed to all of us, and at this time I would ask for a motion for us to adopt the agenda as presented.
I make a motion we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. We want to adopt the minutes of the March 2nd, 2020 Regular Council meeting, and the special call meeting of March 19th and March 25th. We need to do each one of those separately, or can we do all three since we have all three?
I believe since you've had them in advance, you all could do them. But, Mr. Siphon, would you enter to the record?
I agree, you can just do it by one motion if you want to, Mayor.
I make a motion we accept the minutes as distributed, all three meetings. You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Before we get into the next item on our agenda, I do want to say that this is, for those who are not a part of our city government, this is an unusual time for all of us, and we are in new efforts to allow us to act as a city, so that we can move forward on those things that are most important to everyone, and that is that our city runs each day like it should, that all of us collaborate and that we all work together in unusual ways, and this Zoom meeting is one of those. And now, that being said, Brandon, I'm gonna ask if you could put up the National Public Safety Proclamation.
Yes, sir.
For those, for the council, and for those who are here listening, this is the National Public Safety Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 12th to April 18th of 2020. So, as it is presented to us, then I want to adopt this, this national proclamation, so I would ask for a motion from council to adopt this as it is shown to us in this particular meeting.
I make a motion that we adopt the National Public Safety Telecommunication Proclamation.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposed? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, any opposed? Proclamation is now adopted. And that can go away, Brandon, if you are pleased, sir. Okay, under old business, I may use a request for a special event on Main Street with car shows, and I have Donnie Fowler and council member Ann Snavey. Is that ready to bring forward?
Donnie was gonna try to call in tonight, I don't know that he was able to do that. They're still looking for, I was hoping he could, because I wanted him to give you the version of why they wanted to be on Main Street. Also, Carrie wanted to have some say, and I have not been able to get a hold of her today. But, they do not want an alternate place, so I don't know that we can honor what they're requesting at this point. So, council members, I'm looking for any help or feedback as to what we could do.
Ms. Ann, will we be better to table this until our next meeting?
We could, and I'll try to follow up, and then we'll vote on it next time if we don't get, you know, I know it's kind of challenging for some people on the Zoom calls and meetings like this, and I imagine Donnie probably is one of them too, so.
Ann, who did you say also wanted input on this?
Carrie Rowland had called me about it, but I was not able to get a hold of her. Today, I was gonna try to follow up with her, so maybe we could just table it one more month, and let me try to get a hold of both of them again.
I make a motion we table it, and we can get some more information. So, we have a motion to table, second?
Second.
I heard a second. Any further discussion?
Here, I would ask the date for this, you know, it could fall within the provisions where we were suspending permits for public gatherings, and I can't remember the opinion of the provision.
They ordinarily start in April during the fourth Saturday of each month, they know that is not a possibility right now, and they normally run through September if I recall correctly.
Well, I think for sure that in April and perhaps May, they won't be able to do it. Hopefully, we'll all be back to normal, or closer to normal in June.
Right, right, and they are aware that they couldn't do anything at this point in time regardless of what we do. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are tabled on that motion. Item B is a consideration of approval of ordinance number 2020-07 for requesting to rezone parcel number JA11023 at 26 Hickory Street from R1 to R3, and Brandon, I'm gonna let you discuss this, I think we're tabling this until next meeting also.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, and for the public, this particular item we left on, it's a leftover from March 2nd, where there had been applicant requesting to rezone some property. However, during the course of the meeting, it was advised that staff in concert with the legal were gonna work with the applicant to then look at the May 4th meeting. So, although the meeting on March 2nd predated some of the national and state local emergencies, this still affords us time to get with the applicant legal and the committee to go over any text amendments or other changes to the zoning ordinance, and we are still within the timeframe necessary to table through this meeting.
Okay, so we are tabled.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item C is a consideration and approval of ordinance number 2020-08 for requesting to rezone parcel number 031003.002 at 1874 Hobson Road from C2 to R1. And Brandon, will you bring that forward to us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, and for the public, the next several items under old business, the agenda is rather lengthy due to the fact that procedurally, there was positive action taken at the March 2nd meeting, we're on some zoning decisions that had been made, recommended, been made at the February 25th meeting, and then subsequent approval to move forward at the March 2nd meeting by council. Essence, what you have is each of the zoning considerations, this one in particular from C2 to R1, preliminarily, you all have approved the first, so to speak, or the consideration. So procedurally, this along with a few other, the next few items, would then be what used to be considered the second reading, but then the final consideration of ordinance for the measure of rezoning. If there's a need to discuss this particular agenda item for Hobson Road was a 68 acre piece of land that was subdivided off a 700 acre tract, it has no frontage on 515, access is to through Hobson Road, which is in the city, it's the parcel itself, there was a zoning condition of five acre map sizes, no more than 12 lots, and that is the ordinance that is drawn up for you.
And what we need to do is approve this as a second reading?
Correct.
I make a motion we approve this as a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as a second reading on this parcel. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carried, and the second reading is complete. Item D is consideration of approval ordinance number 2020-09 and ordinance number 2020-10 for requesting to rezone an annex parcel number JA02038 at 1343 Talking Road from RR in the county to C2. And Brandon, will you bring this forward to us?
Yes, sir, as the last item, this particular item was favorably received and considered at the March 2nd meeting, so the obligatory second reading or final consideration of the ordinance, the applicant had requested to annex a parcel into the city, subsequent annexation would then carry over a need of zoning, and the applicant's request of C2 is to essentially have a four wheeler car to tour. Right now, the, there is no immediate plans to turn dirt, but if considered, the applicant would just, it'll be the second reading in essence.
Well, I need a motion for consideration of the second reading on this.
Motion to approve as second reading.
In a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E is consideration of approval ordinance number 2020-11 for the City of Jasper zoning ordinance amendment, zoning map approval. If I understand this, we needed to have this done so that we could adopt a zoning map, is that correct? Brandon, I'll let you bring that to us also.
Correct, that's correct, Mr. Mayor, council, this is, it was at the February 25th on the zoning commission meeting, the March 2nd, Mayor and council, it was favorably received. Procedurally, we need to do some amendments to our zoning ordinance, and then that allows us moving forward when we adopt our zoning map. So this would in essence be the.
Need a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance.
I may.
Second.
Any further discussion? You have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F is an alcohol application, consideration of approval for Folks' Adventure LLC doing business as Walt Met Sellers at 916 Old Philadelphia Road. Brandon, would you bring this to us, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, and for the public, this applicant has met the obligatory advertising in the paper and on site, he is wanting to essentially sell wine by the glass and retail, which is allowed our farm winery ordinance, and this would just be the final consideration, the application, in proper form, and it's been advertised, so good to go.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve this alcohol application.
I make a motion that we approve the alcohol application for Folks' Adventure LLC.
In a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item G is a similar application for consideration of approval of Texas Grill LLC located at 660 West Church Street, if you will, Brandon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, this particular application had been advertised, well, there was a deficiency in, such as the applicant had not actually put in or posted sign on its place of business that has been corrected, so it is in proper form and in order.
Okay, so I need a, I'll invite a motion to approve for this if it's in proper order.
I make a motion that we continue with the alcohol application for Texas Grill LLC.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Any opposed? So this, item seven is a public hearing, which is a proposed lease purchase agreement between the City of Jasper and Bill and Connie Rowland at 315 Liberty Lane. Brandon, please explain this to us.
Yes, sir, Ann, I may ask Mr. Siphon to chime in from a legal perspective, however, this item along with the next item thereafter is, is something after the elective began in July 1 of 2019, whereupon approval had been provided from council to work with property owners at 315 Liberty Lane Rowlands to essentially create an area where we discharge our leachate at home, while give us the ability to purchase a little over two acres worth of what's a driveway or a road leading to our lift stations. The delay in between July 1 of last year and this meeting has been significant, in so much as staff needed to have some legal documents drawn up, and then some process procedures to follow through, whereupon January, February, we got Mr. Siphon to assist us in doing the and to draw up the proper legal documentation to do with the purchase agreement. I can get into the details in so much of the agreement, in essence, we had agreed to the Rowlands of a non-escalating payment, non-interest payment of a thousand a month for 12 months for 10 years for the purchase of two plus acres, working out to about 50 something thousand an acre, and it would be twofold for the discharging of leachate as well as to obtain the perpetual rights and ownership of the property whereupon our lift station is located.
The only thing I would add, Mayor and council, is that the statutory requirements for having a lease purchase agreement requires that we have a public hearing, so we have advertised for a public hearing on this proposed lease purchase agreement that basically reflects the terms that Brandon, the city manager, has gone through, and so, Mayor, since we need to have a public hearing, I'd suggest that you just ask whether there's anyone that would want to speak in favor of the lease purchase agreement, if we get any response, and then see if there's anyone that would want to speak in opposition to the lease purchase agreement, and see if we get any response, and then after we get public input, you can close the public hearing, and the council can decide whether to go for the lease purchase agreement or not at that time.
And as a public hearing, I will unmute all right now. So we will invite the public to come forward and speak on this, or anyone who has something to say, please let us know at this time. With no one coming forward, then I think we should close the public part of it and go back to our meeting.
And for the record, as we're recording, Mr. Mayor, there were no persons that I saw that asked to be recognized, for the record.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do also want to note that when we did a title search on the property, our title search indicated that there was a lender that still had a security interest in the property, and the property owners, the Rowlands, I think are indicating that they are not sure that's correct, that they haven't chosen why they believe that, so if the council does vote to approve the lease purchase agreement, it also needs to be continued upon city staff in our office lobbying whether we can get the lender to sign off on the lease purchase agreement.
So, the motion needs to be that we approve the purchase once clear title can be established?
That'd be fine.
I make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward with this, depending on a clear title being established by staff and by city attorney at a later time. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to move forward is carried. With this. Now, under new business, how is this different, Brandon? Let me read this, consideration of approval of lease purchase agreement between the City of Jasper and Bill and Connie Rowland, subject to lender's approval, that's how it's different.
Yes, that was actually the item y'all just voted on?
Yes.
Come out of the public hearing, and there had been a motion, but in essence, the next item was the consideration, and so the wording is consistent with this item.
So we'll just mark that one off because we've already done it before. And under new business, item B, consideration of ordinance number 2020-12, special land use permit for parcel number 030B096153 located at 858 Old Philadelphia Road, unit number 102. Brandon, would you bring this to us, please?
Yes, sir, and just for background, this will be the time that y'all have considered the spec land use permit. If you recall, last year, we entered a special land use permit into our zoning ordinance, whereupon it provides the opportunity for a public hearing process to go through commission and then subsequent consideration through the elected body. The special land use permit allows for a property owner or user of a property to ask for a particular permit to use a parcel or building in a manner that may not be clearly identified as a, however, it is consistent with undergrounding. As such, the Planning and Zoning Commission did meet via Google Zoom on Tuesday, March 24th, whereupon a public hearing was conducted on this particular applicant's request, Mr. Harvey, to utilize the property at 858 Old Philadelphia Road, unit 102, light welding and fabrication. There were persons that spoke from the public via Google Zoom, in your staff report, it will illustrate that the express would relate to parking, in so much as that area, there is a restaurant in the area where there is at times an influx of workers that need to work in the unit. The applicant, I'm not sure if Mr. was here tonight, Mr. Mayor, but he essentially confirmed that his intended use of the, that particular unit would not entail a large number of parking spaces for the utilized, so in essence, he would be having the spaces that accompany the rental of the building that he would occupy, and there would not be any heavy delivery to the parcel or to the property. So, seeing no other comments, the recommending body of planning and zoning did recommend approval of special land use permit to you all in anticipation or preparation of any consideration. Siphon and I have consulted, and there is an actual ordinance should you want to move forward with consideration that does details some zoning, respect of use with some conditions, without no heavy traffic used, and that we all comply with any of the requirements of
So council, what's your pleasure? I need a motion if we're gonna move forward with this and approve it as has been presented to us, and also approved by our own committee.
Make a motion that we approve this special land use permit with the conditions that there is, number one, no frequent heavy truck traffic, and condition two, the property owner will comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, including sections 94-80, 94-208, and 94-149.
For those of us who are not attorneys, would you explain what that, exactly what we're doing here? Those sections, what do they do?
I took a look at the zoning ordinance and just pulled out sections that we had imposed in the past as support of our ordinance. I think it's no off-site parking is one of the provisions, and I can't remember the other two. other two off the top of my head, but it was an attempt to, I guess, clarify to the applicant that he's got to comply with those conditions, zoning ordinance, and addressing matters that the public had brought up at the public hearing. He would have had to comply with them anyway, but I didn't see any harm in sort of emphasizing to him that he needed to comply with those provisions.
Okay, thank you, David. And so I have a motion. Do I have a second to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. This stipulation is as outlined by Councilman Redfield. Brandon, our next one is tabled. Do we need to have any discussion on this?
Just to make sure that the council knows, as well as the public, and for matter of record, there was another public hearing at the March 24th Plan Commission. The applicant, staff, as well as the applicant, had received some late afternoon information that, as part of the due diligence, it was determined to table this matter until the next planning and zoning meeting, so that we can just follow through with the information. And so there was no action taken by Planning and Zoning. It was merely consistent with that. We're just ready.
All right. So now, do we need a motion to table? Do we officially do that?
I think as a matter of record, I believe in the way we advertise meetings dealing with zoning, say that it's going to be publicly held at a planning and zoning meeting with a subsequent consideration at Mayor and Council. For the record, it would be advisable to just document.
Yeah, I agree. Probably should just do a motion to table, just so the record.
Make a motion to table.
Make a motion to table, new business item C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table, a consideration of this ordinance number 2020-13. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is tabled. Item D is consideration approval of work order with Clark Patterson and Lee for review and proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance for an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, and for staff to amend the 2020 budget for use of fund balance accordingly. And I think that our lead on this will be Councilmember Proctor and Councilmember Redfield. So would y'all bring those to us?
Mr. Mayor, if you recall, on our retreat not so long ago, we discussed the possibility of engaging additional assistance and ultimately received a quote from them. Brandon and I met with him subsequent to that initial quote, gave him a little bit more detail on what we were expecting, and they revised their quotation to a significantly lesser amount. Having made note that this is a tremendously important part of our reorganization that's been occurring over the last several years, myself and Mr. Redfield had a discussion as to, myself and Brandon, about, and I think you and I, Mayor, have had a conversation as well, we think this is a funding that will be well-needed and get us ahead of this perpetual challenge that we're meeting with our planning and zoning. So I'd like to make a recommendation to the council that we bring out of committee this proposal and appropriate the funds for it.
Thank you. Redfield?
I agree.
Brandon, do you have further discussion on this before we approve?
Just for the record, just to echo of what Dr. Proctor had stated, the importance of this for the public, when committees have a zoning ordinance, at times, it can cost up to a hundred thousand dollars to do any sort of modifications to zoning ordinances. The quote that we initially received was significantly down to try to fit within the parameter that staff, along with our City Attorney, could work with to any future exposure we have. So I'd like to commend the committee for their foresight and for their diligence in kind of keeping some of the costs down. The actual estimate was twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. The motion that Dr. Proctor would be seeking is to give allowances for additional monies should it come up. So that's all for staff.
Thank you, Brandon. So, Council, on the positive consideration of our committee chairs, that would be Councilman Proctor and Councilman Redfield, and in agreement with what we have done as far as our planning session, that seemed like about two years ago, but as Sonny Proctor said, was recently, then I'll ask for a, I'll ask for a motion to approve this to go forward.
This coming from committee, do we need a motion? Or commit? If we need a motion, I'll make it.
We do. And we need a second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for the councils. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Sam? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Item E, on our agenda, is consideration of approval of quotes for purchase and installation of playground equipment at City Park as monies in comfort through assignment of fund balance. And I'll ask our committee chair of Councilmembers Snavey and Faust to bring this to us.
I think that, as Sonny just stated, it seems like forever since we had our meeting, but I think we need to continue to move forward. I know there's not a lot we can do right now, but I think we need to keep this on here and continue to move forward with our discussion about our playground equipment, and since we have the old playground stuff removed already. Jake, you got something to add?
Well, no, I just think it's important that we get it and we provide a safe area for our kids and our citizens to be able to enjoy the park area. I think it's going to, you know, putting in the new playground equipment, putting in the new biomass up under the stuff. I think it's something that has to be done. I really do.
And I agree. And Brandon, would you tell us more about this?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, Council, and for the public, the importance of this item is, as Councilmembers Snavey and Faust have stated, this was set in motion at the retreat and subsequently the March 2nd meeting, which was the last regularly scheduled meeting. There was direction to remove the playground equipment, which was done on March the sixth, on a Friday, and subsequently on March the 13th was the President's declaration of national emergency. So I think in context, we look back, the playground has been removed for several weeks. However, have necessitated attention elsewhere, we've not been able to, staff has not been able to get with the committee to go over some of the detail of the playground equipment. After the March meeting, staff did number the funds from finance of surplus, our fund balance money is a fifty thousand. So from a financial standpoint, that money is set aside, staff did, so that we could honor the request that the public through the council to install the playground equipment. It's just going to take a little bit more time for staff to vet it through council. So once again, just like to commend y'all's for y'all's diligence and move forward.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
So, Council, we have council chairs, Councilmembers Snavey and Faust, who have brought this to us, and this also is in line with what we have said that we wanted to move forward with. So I'm asking for a motion to approve and to have staff go forward with this when they can.
I make a motion that we approve and have staff to move forward with it as we can.
And I need a second to that, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Sam? Motion carries. Item left, consideration approval of extending up to twenty thousand dollars of 2014's lost proceeds for the esporting of the public parking area and associated concrete work at 125 North Main Street. So I'm going to ask Councilmembers Faust and Snavey to bring this to the full council, please.
Well, the city toward the old drive-through down at the bank, as you can see where the parking lot is, personally, we'd like to finish this up. That way we'll get more parking for downtown and, you know, gets the project pretty well underway. We need this part of the big picture that we had discussed at our retreat. Do you have anything to add, Ian?
No, I mean, I agree. I think we need to make the motion that we move forward with this as well, when staff is able to do it.
Brandon, I'll ask for your input on this also.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, for the public, what I'd like to just illustrate is, once again, at the March 2nd meeting, direction led to move forward, getting the whole drive-throughs taken down, as Councilmember Faust stated. We did that in-house measure to help mitigate some costs. And we have gotten a local vendor, Kevin Moss, to give us a quote of between eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars to do a two-inch overlaying for the parking area. We would subsequently diagonally strip both sides, so there would be a drive way through the middle with eight spacers on each side in a diagonal manner, coming off of Main Street, exiting on the Woodfield. Because of us having to close in the curb line and concrete and sidewalk, we would also need a local contractor. Bobby Delay has done some work for Unity and some sidewalk. So he has quoted us an estimate of about five thousand dollars. It would be done by him and a couple of other persons. They would essentially come in with a pumper truck and pump in probably two or three yards of concrete, excuse me, probably about six yards or so of concrete, form it up, smooth it out. Now we'd have a lane of travel going through the parking lot with parking. I'm asking for not to exceed twenty thousand for any sort of conditions that may come up. We do have 2014's lost monies from paving and concrete. Those monies are already in the bank of nearly four hundred thousand dollars to the last paving project we conducted at the end of 2019. The additional monies set aside and will continue to collect through June 30th of this year, fourteen monies, those have to be spent on asphalt and concrete sidewalk. So what we would in essence be asking for is to move forward expeditiously to get these vendors on board and to conduct the work. We did not feel that it would warrant a large out-to-bid type project, just because at the time, big outfits would not be interested, and the mobilization cost in and of itself would probably not warrant that. So that's awful.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
So, Council, I'm asking for a motion to approve the paving and striping and concrete work at 125 North Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Sam? Motion carries, and staff and Redfield proceed at their, at their point. Item G, consideration of approval of twenty-five thousand dollars for the use of a 2020 budget to proceed for Matchpoint to begin survey work and leak detection throughout our water system, as well as to use the water fund balance for 2020 for associated work by Matchpoint with zone leaders throughout the water system. Now, Brandon, I have David down for this, and I don't think he's on, is he?
He's not.
We'll let you fill in for him.
I will let everyone up, I did give the option of our department heads to participate or not, and even if it was not required. Mr. Hall and I did speak, and I was unable to confirm with Dr. Proctor, as he had kind of set the wheels in motion at the March 2nd meeting to direct, to have to move forward. We did actually get a quote, or a price from Matchpoint, that the gold meters of about four zoned meters would be twenty-five thousand. So the twenty-five thousand for the survey work, the leak detection, is a budgeted item. So as the agenda illustrates, those monies are already allocated through an item, and we've done it for, I think, three years now, and it's been very good in helping to identify areas of leaks to help us with our water loss ratio. And for everyone watching or listening, the actual zone leaders is another measure to continue to help us identify problem areas in our system that needs to be addressed or remedied. So the two-part series of item G, we do not know whether or not we would have any sort of cost to give y'all. So I was prepared just to ask for moving forward with the leak detection, but if it's y'all's pleasure, we could do that, and then, I'd like to thank for Dr. Proctor, I'll let him talk about if we want to move forward with the zone. We were not sure how many we would get or what the cost, but it is about twenty-five thousand for four initial meters.
So, Council, would entertain a motion to approve this work going forward to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on the leak detection with Matchpoint?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on this, Sam? Do you have comments on this?
Well, I think it's important, and if we can, that we do some zoning. It's just a commitment that we made at the retreat to focus on infrastructure, which has been a kind of well-known talking point around the city of Jasper for quite some time. But I think with all the other commitments we're making, moving forward with the leak detection is a great first step.
And think about the, you know, the money that we're going to save, you know, we treat the water, we want to get it to the public, and it's leaking out. So, you know, we, we need to make sure that we take care of our system. We've got to. Maintenance is part of it.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Sam? Motion carries, and staff is directed to move forward with that. Item H, upon our agenda, under new business, is consideration of approval of purchasing body armor for the Jasper Police Department, and amend the 2020 budget for use of fund balance. And I have our council chairs, Councilmember Redfield and Councilmember Looney. Would you bring this to the council, please?
So, Council, speaking to the police chief, the staff, Mr. Douglas, and Mr. Looney, my co-chair for public safety, reviewing the quotes, there is a difference in the two options. The biggest being that the actual sizing or fitting of the body armor The biggest being that the actual sizing or fitting of the body armor is done in a personal sense by Federal Eastern International, which is the 15,170, and I would like to make a motion that we approve the Federal Eastern International quote for 15,170 for our officers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
If you would, just go ahead and show that that is also a motion to amend the fund balance for that amount.
So we have a motion to amend the fund balance, although that's not on my sheet here. A motion to amend the fund balance up to $15,170. Brandon, do you want to weigh in on this?
That's okay with staff, how council would like to move forward, yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same, sign. The motion carries and staff is directed to make our public safety employees safer. Item I, is consideration approval of authorizing staff to assign surplus status to the items listed in staff report and begin preparations of an auction to be held by the city at a time to be determined with location and date. So Lonnie, would you like to speak to this again?
Absolutely. I'm such a camera hog, I apologize to all y'all that I was unable to get other people to log on other than Lindsay and Tara's hiding. Nonetheless, I hope you all enjoyed the 100-plus pages of items that Lonnie and staff had put together. Lindsay and others have been putting together some stuff for you all to look at preliminarily at the retreat. What we were doing was to make sure that you all, in advance of the action being taken, whether it was surplus, whether it was junk, whether it was good stuff to auction off, we wanted you all the opportunity to look through some of the stuff that we've identified as eligible for surplusing out. Essentially what that means to the general public is, these are items that we are no longer using, whether we don't need to, or whether we can't, or whether the cost of that is outweighed from its value. So we are not in a position at this time to even set a date, time, or location, but we do feel as though that it's important that when things pick back up, we are in a position that you all have essentially given us a blessing to move forward, you know, moving on these items. Sometimes staff, historically, I think, is just more on doing some sales or surplusing out, cause it is government purchased and helped items, we wanted you all to weigh in. So if you have any questions specifically about what some of those items are, I can bring them up on the screen and we can go through them, but I'm not really talking about a lot of them.
So, council, can we have a motion to approve staff to move forward with this at a date to be determined?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, sign. Motion carries. So, our next item, J, consideration approval of extending the professional service agreement with interim director of finance Sharon Burks in accordance with Section 2 for three 30-day renewals for a term ending July the 7th of 2020. Now, full disclosure to the council, I've been for three years, and I think I failed in that regard. So we're looking at three days and, excuse me, three 30-day periods instead of three years. So Brandon, would you bring that to us, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, Lindsay and Sharon have done a phenomenal job in this transition, and I think that in consultation with staff and Burks and with some of you all, there is exactly continue to have, seeing her capacity as interim director, her agreement ends tomorrow, and so prior to this meeting, we had consulted with Ms. Burks, she has been practicing social distancing, and we did have some field work done by the auditors a week or so ago, so there hasn't been a real big need to have her in the office day-to-day. Her and Lindsay have consulted with each other regularly. She has been only paid what she's been working, so she's not running out the clock, but what this affords us to do is to extend her agreement to allow us to fit up with the audit, amend the 2019 budget, and then work on the audit presentation, and then the amendment of 2020. So with that, I don't have anything else to add.
Along to make a motion, we extend the contract for three 30-day renewals as spout out into contract now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to extend for three 30-day renewals the professional service agreement with Sharon Burks. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item K is consideration approval of an organizational chart for the city of Jasper. Councilmembers Looney and Snaby are co-chairs for that. We would ask you to bring this to the rest of the council, please.
Council, in your package, there is a copy of the organizational chart. This is something that, golly, has been going on for well over a year now, and I think it's time to approve this organization chart. Eventually, very soon, we'll be moving into discussing job descriptions and salary programs. This is part of that consideration, and in fact, tonight, I think we'll be talking a little bit about job descriptions. So I bring this to council for approval.
Council, members Snaby?
I agree. I think this is the start of the process that we talked about on the organizational chart, so I make... Did you miss make the motion? I'll second it.
I can make that a motion, certainly.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the organizational chart for the city of Jasper as presented to you. Any further discussion?
Brandon, do you have that chart to be able to show to the public that's present?
I do, and I apologize, I'm trying to unmute. All right. Let's see. I believe one moment I should have it up. And if not, council member, I'll have it on your packet.
It is. I was looking for the public that's present to be able to view at the same time.
Thanks, sir.
If I hold it up to the iPhone, does it pick it up, Brandon?
It doesn't. I can leave it up there.
Everyone's waiting for me to cover my face.
Yes.
There we go.
Ah, there it is.
There you go. There it is.
I commend the committee for this work. This is fantastic to see. Thank y'all very much.
This came from staff.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. This is now our new organizational chart. Thank you all. The council, going along with that last consideration, item L, is consideration approval of employment agreements and associated job descriptions for David Hall, Lonnie Waters, Adam Howard, Greg Lovell, Steve Roper, and to authorize the mayor to execute prepared agreements. So this is pretty much what we've been trying to do as a council since the early days, which seems like so long ago, was, what, 30 days? It's just impossible to believe it's only been that short period of time. But for us to move forward as a city, I think that this is the way for us to go, and I'm going to ask Brandon Douglas if he will bring that to our council.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, what had been discussed at the retreat, in terms of just a professional-run organization, there are positions of leadership that in the industry, there's a requirement for an agreement that sets aside certain, I guess, perimeters in which you're operating. It just spells out at the department head who is leading a particular, I guess, division of the city. So going back to the six areas of departments, development, admin, water, wastewater, police, fire, and then the Department of Public Works, which consists of sanitation and parks, these leaders are working with you all regularly in public as well as frontline employees. So there is a professional standard that says that we will provide you with the opportunity to professionally advance through training opportunities, provide you with technology to do your job, and other materials, similarly to the agreement that you all entered with me, profession. It's just delineates that that person as a leader will also provide opportunities for notification when they do want to leave, so that they just don't leave after two weeks or three weeks. There's a requirement of about 60 days. Conversely, there's the clear conditions that they'll be evaluated on their performance, and should they not perform, then they are subject to being a real employee and can be dismissed in agreeance with the terms. So it just, it protects the city, it protects the department head, and it's just a good measure to begin him. And I'm not sure if Mr. Siphon wants to... Let's unmute you, Mr. Pro. Here we go.
Okay, I've looked over the proposed contracts. They are based upon the initial draft that I'd done, and Brandon did a great job of plugging in a job description, so the agreements look great to me, and they're ready to go if the council wants to approve.
Council, I ask for a motion for us to move forward with these employment contracts for our division heads, department heads. So, boy, we're all dropping in on that, but I don't think everybody watched this idea. Okay.
Yeah.
Give me one.
So moved.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion?
Well, we're in the 20th century, Jasper.
And thank you all. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and thank you. Item N, is consideration approval of creating an account for SPOSS 2020 with Community Bank of Pickens County and to authorize the requisite signers of Mayor Lawrence, Mayor Pro Tem Looney, City Manager Brandon Douglas, and Chief Steve Roper. I'm going to ask Lindsay Williams, and she'll bring this to us.
Now, that's a surprise. Okay, so what we need to do is since the SPOSS 2020 is going to start in July, we need to create a new account. So currently, we have our 2014 SPOSS account with Community Bank of Pickens County, so we were just going to continue to carry on our SPOSS account with them.
I approve it.
Okay. So, council, I need a motion to approve creating this new account for SPOSS.
I make a motion, we approve a new account with United Community Bank of Pickens County for deposit and disbursement of SPOSS 2020 funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you did not get to speak on that one.
I can see, it takes me a lot more words to get approval than Lindsay, so good job, Lindsay.
Hey, we may need to add, though, we need to add the signers. I think we have to have in there the signers.
Add it in the motion?
Yes.
I included that in my motion. Authorize the signers are Mayor Lawrence, Mayor Pro Tem Looney, City Manager Douglas, and Chief Steve Roper. I'll amend my motion for them.
Hey, gee, let me make that motion since you're one of the signers.
A good idea.
Okay. I'd like to get approval for setup account, Community Bank of Pickens County, to authorize Reuben and Sanders, Mayor Lawrence, Mayor Pro Tem Looney, City Manager Brandon Douglas, and Chief Steve Roper.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, consideration approval of creating an account for sanitation at United Community Bank, and to remove said sanitation account from Community Bank of Pickens County, and to authorize the requisite signers of Mayor Lawrence, Mayor Pro Tem Looney, Chief Manager Brandon Douglas, and Chief Steve Roper. Lindsay, could you bring this to us again?
Thank you, Mayor. So this would be to close an account at Community Bank of Pickens, which is our sanitation account. That's why we wanted to add the 2020 SPOSS with them, and to add this to United Community Bank. It would just make it a lot easier for us to be able to transfer our payroll and stuff like that, weekly and monthly expenses back and forth, versus having to cut checks every time we do it. So it just helps the accounting procedure a little bit better.
So you're closing one account and opening another one, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, and then we need the requisite signer, so council, I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we close the account at Community Bank for the sanitation and open one at United Community Bank with the requisite signers as Mayor Lawrence, Mayor Pro Tem Jim Looney, City Manager Brandon Douglas, and Chief Steve Roper.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. For the consideration of this, do we have any further discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Lindsay, you are hereby authorized to do that, and good Lord, Brandon, you took a break again.
Thank you.
Item M, was an approval of purchases of requisite chemicals for water plants and water pollution, the control plan in the amount of $26,000, $361.96. Brandon, I think you're up on this. I appreciate you bringing this to us.
And matter of fact, on your spreadsheet, you'll see Lindsay's, or in your package, you'll see Lindsay's anyway, so if, to clarify, can you talk again? You may recall February 19, we began negotiations for the local emergency by an... that enables us to move forward certain purchases that we could then, I can have you all ratify. There was the need in the force staff to go ahead and front load and order a few months or a couple extra months of chemicals. We are one of those essential industries that when you turn your knob on your water faucet, you expect water to come out, clean water, which we provide, so the chemicals necessary. We went ahead and got a couple of extra months beyond the normal thirty days supply. The cost is budgeted monies in so much as we just went ahead and did it as kind of, rather than wait to see if something would happen, we went ahead and ordered it to get it in. So I cannot in the least explain all of the description items, but I would ask for your favorable consideration of ratifying these.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the chemicals for the water plant and water pollution control plant in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
A motion is second to approve these expenditures. Any further discussion?
Thank you for having the foresight to our staff.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. The approval carries. Item P is an approval of Water Department to commence work at dredging and maintaining Long Swamp Creek at the requisite distance from our water intake. Why don't we let you have this one since David is not here?
He's probably in the waiting room, I'm just not letting him in. I would have to say that Dr. Proctor, a week or so ago, asked me about some work being done down at the Cove. The, there was an article in the paper speaking with Pickens Progress. We are doing some maintenance projects. Kind of what's been brought to life is this need to be a little proactive as best we can, such as the chemicals, such as the cleaning up or maintenance overflow. If you recall, we've been getting a lot of damage here in recent memory, and Long Swamp Creek has an overflow that had been approved by EPD some years back. Most persons had not really remembered it because it had not been maintained, admittedly the way that it needed to, because what that allows us to do, it will pick up some excess water to help mitigate any damage to our intake at the creek. In the same spirit of what I wanted to do is present this to you all as well as to let the public know, in consultation with the committee, I think Mr. Faust may have spoken with Mr. Hall as well, we are being proactive to go ahead and dred the requisite two-hundred feet back from the intake, Long Swamp, to allow for some of the silt and other stuff to be removed, help mitigate any future damage to the intake as best we can. I think Lindsey can comment. In years past, when we've done this, I think in 2018, the cost was pretty substantial. It was a lot more intensive and... We do not foresee any necessary large expenditures. Did not put it on your agenda, an amount, but I think as a practice and talking to Lindsey on Thursday, it may be good to hedge our bets and probably sink up to fifteen thousand worth of optional monies from the Water Department to mitigate any costs we may run into. Mr. Hall had advised me Friday that he thinks it would be five thousand or less, but just so we're not in the midst of it and have to stop because of financial limitations, I just wanted to throw a suggestion, and I don't know if the committee has any input they'd like to share.
Well, it's just, to me, it's kind of like changing oil in your car or something that we need to do. We need to preserve that intake, not have it damaged, because it costs us a whole lot more money than what it's going to cost to do the work if it does get damaged. Plus, they're going to be able to do most of the work from the bank, they're not actually going to be down in it, so I think it's a very wise thing to do at this time, especially with all the rain that we've had this year. I mean, we've just had a ton of rain.
What would the cost make, are they renting some equipment for additional... Equipment or what? I'm not sure what the five thousand...
David first did not give me any identified funds that he was going to use. He thinks he can use the long arm and just use some dump trucks. I'm not necessarily in a position to open the full engine because he thinks everything can be done in-house at no additional cost. I'm just...
I hear. So just in case something comes up, we need to put some money out there.
Yeah, y'all know David, he's not going to want to spend a dollar, and Lindsey's a pretty good accounting person to ensure...
Lindsey's cheaper than David, so...
But I'm just, I don't want to be in the midst of it and have to hesitate because of financial implications and stopping the project, waiting until May.
Yeah. I'll make a motion we allocate five thousand dollars as potential cost to complete the project.
Jim, that's actually fifteen, up to fifteen thousand, if you don't mind, please.
That's what I said, fifteen.
Okay, great.
Second.
So I have a motion, the second, allocate up to fifteen thousand dollars for the work of dredging and maintaining at our water intake as needed. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries, and Brandon, you can move forward. Item Q, consideration of approval for replacing the panel box for the wet well at the water pollution control plant. And Brandon, I don't see a dollar mark on this.
At the time the agenda was being prepared, we had not finalized the two quotes, so I put it as the item. However, packets, there are two quote, the second quote from Caldwell Electrical Contractor is given up as the actual quote to do the panel repair transformer is forty-five hundred dollars. I put it sixty-one fifty. Solutions Inc. was five thousand, one hundred dollars and fourteen cents. And then Caldwell Electrical was forty-five hundred. I think Mr. Hall may have spoken with Mr. Faust today. I'm not sure if he wants to add anything, but as you recall, we had recently, I mean, last month or January, or excuse me, February, had approved for one of the motors at the wet well to be replaced, the electrical components that as the floods and stuff comes from the pavement through the wet well and through the fluid, this just helps it keep running. So the electrical components, I believe, were nineteen eighty-seven, so I think it's probably due for, David seems to think he had it repaired rather than replaced, so I'm just trusting that we're going to get what we need the least expensive way possible.
So am I even correct that we need a, we need a motion for about like sixty-one fifty?
Mr. Faust, do you have anything to add?
No, I think sixty-one fifty is a good, good price. I do know that Caldwell's the one that did our generators, and they did very, very clean, very neat work. I'm very happy with the work that they've done, and I know they'll do us a good job. And they, we have a good history with Caldwell.
Council, I'd entertain a motion for us to approve about sixty-one fifty for replacing the panel box for the wet well at the water pollution control plant.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. The motion carries. Item R, under new business, consideration of approval of requisite hardware to accommodate the upgrades from ETC to City Hall for fiber optics and associated technology costs. Council, I can't tell you how everything that we're doing is moving us forward in the right direction, and communication is one of our, one of the things that we have evidently been lacking in the past, and this is a move forward for us to consider this. And Brandon, I'm going to ask you to speak to the, to the nuts and bolts of it.
Yes, sir, and I will try to do it justice, and I may lean on Councilman Rayfield periodically, but essentially what I wanted to communicate to the elected body as well as to the public is we do have challenges associated with some of our technology. We do have the five-year run, as the mayor said. However, some of the hardware necessary to hook that up in order for us to utilize the broadband and the capabilities, there is just normal cost associated with that. Those monies are not that expensive and is something that staff would typically handle internally as just a part of getting things done. Those costs are about twenty-eight hundred dollars, so it's not necessarily requiring action, but I wanted you all to be aware that in order for us to utilize technology, there's an associated cost. Along with the pro-services agreement, we have historically chosen the silver plan, which is approximately two hundred dollars per hour or per month. Recommending to go to the gold plan of three hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Once again, as well, with what staff would just do and budget, but we wanted you all to be made aware of these items. The email server that we have has reached its, I think, five in there. There's a couple of options for new server as well as new firewall. These are outside of our realm of spending. I've put on your agenda the associated technology calls because in your sheet, I've asked you all to consider either option two with an associated cost, and we would utilize any monies we have in line items. I think we had, had budgeted about ten thousand worth of server replacement. Regardless of the option, we will exceed the... So it's my professional opinion, I would want you all to give us the authority to amend the budget to allow use of fund balance for any monies spent beyond a particular line item. I don't know if Mayor, Mr. Rayfield, wants to comment. I can give you the certain option one and two, and firewall one and two, but he'll speak on anything.
Counsel, this truly comes down to we're moving in the right direction like the mayor said, and if you don't mind, Mayor, tell me how this would work. I believe separate motions would be better than one together. One motion for the support plan that we decide to move forward with, and also a motion for City Hall's hardware, and then also a motion for the Police Department. Those are three separate areas, I believe, that's my opinion. If you look at the servers that are presented in the quotes, there are very few discrepancies in the Police Department versus City Hall's. There is a price discrepancy, that's due to the drives. ETC provided a quote for the Police Department at a higher cost due to extra drives. I've talked to the police chief, his investigators, the IT. We don't believe those to be necessary. I am excited about these opportunities that are presenting themselves with this. This is truly moving us in the right direction, for sure.
Councilmember Rayford, if I may, one thing about the Police Department, if you're, if you're looking at what we have today versus where we may move to, then you're exactly right that it's not necessary right now. However, if in the immediate future, I'm going to say in the next three years or so, we start putting cameras out there on certain things, then we're going to eat up a lot of, a lot of storage. And I think if you looked at that, that's what that, that extra was for, would be additional storage.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I'd like to address that, and might get David's input on this too. I think for stuff like the body cams and the dash cams, I think we need an independent storage versus having it on the server. What do you think, David?
I don't think that's a bad idea. I'd have to go back, you know, at one time, the General Assembly was going to pass some local acts that mandated that you keep the body cam footage and the vehicle footage for a certain amount of time. I'm not sure that it ever passed. Of course, we're sort of in the suspended period for the 2020 session. I can check on that tomorrow, in which I know by email, you know, what's the requirement on that.
Council, I feel like probably everything that has been addressed, that I believe that Brandon has suitably had other people look at this besides, besides those of us who do have a small amount of technical view of things, and I feel good about going with what he recommended. So if, if I might ask him to speak to this in that, in that regard, I would, I think that it would benefit all of us to hear what groundwork you have laid for this.
And what I'd like to do is, is I'm always going to defer to the elected body on how they want to expend the funds. From my perspective, it's an ever-changing, like a world or technology. Once again, I would not necessarily need a decision on the hosting of ETC as the provider, so you do not have a decision on that, as well as the hardware of twenty-seven fifteen eight. Those monies are budgeted for the server. We did budget ten thousand dollars for City Hall. The associated cost of option one is eleven six twenty-eight thirty-six. That would exceed the budget amount. However, the additional monies for the server option two, which I did have an independent person look at, did state that it was a month, or option was fifteen three ninety eighty-four. So if, if the pleasure of the elected body is to move forward with City Hall's, we could expend the ten thousand, and then the additional monies of option two would just come from fund balance. The firewall, same thing. The difference in the option one versus option two for City Hall is in cost as much as it's fourteen thirty-five forty-four versus twenty-five seventy-five forty-four. forty-four. Um, one of the items, I don't think I really did it enough justice, the last paragraph in the memo, um, the monies that we just spoke about for City Hall, uh, would come from the general fund balance. The department has a separate technology fee, but, you know, that, uh, you all could give direction, uh, in terms of saying, um, go spend up to X, um, and then what that affords us to do is fund balance for the, uh, technology fee, similar to SPOST. You can only spend SPOST on asphalt, concrete, uh, or other identified. The technology fee account, uh, for the police can only be for public safety, um, technology expenses. Uh, so if, if it matters to the elected and/or the public, um, there's always the opportunity to, um, recoup some of the money through, uh, fees and other associated, uh, revenues for that. Did that help answer or muddy the waters more? I don't.
What I'm hearing is a concern not with the, uh, uh, the operations, the, the money for the support contract, but possibly additional, the cost of additional, uh, drivers for the police department. And that is something that could be added later, uh, if, if, uh, if we go with the, uh, the same size as what, what we're putting in the City Hall. I think, uh, the police department has six drivers in this quote. City Hall has four, uh, if that's overkill, that could be added later.
I might, I might add one thing here. Uh, the money that City Hall, uh, if what Brandon has outlined, could be spent from those funds that can only be, or the money for the, uh, police department could be spent from those funds that are only to be spent on the police department. So you could actually spend there what you need and then not have, uh, that, that would, that would come out of that fund balance, and then we could spend out of regular fund balance for the rest of it.
That's right.
So, and so I, I think that might be something for us to strongly consider as far as, uh, as far as what's needed at, uh, at the police department. My understanding is that of all of the departments that we have, of course, we all know that we have, we have issues with email, but outside of that, uh, the one that is going to go down anytime is, uh, the police department. It's, it's actually in worse shape than what we have at, uh, at City Hall. And, and I hope every one of you knows that I really won't win at City Hall. But, but the bottom line is, the bottom line is you got to look at what facts are, and facts are, you know, we need to fix that police department and do so about it so that we can, because it may go down any day.
But to go back to Jim's point, we can always add to the storage later on. Um, and that, that's, that's the thing, cause I mean, there's really never enough storage for the body cams, and that's the reason I'm saying we might want to do that with outside vendor, and then also.
I agree. We just need to make sure we get the, the basic equipment there that we need. So now, counsel, how could we put that into a motion that would work?
With you, Kirk.
And, and from staff's perspective, uh, and Lindsay can chime in, I think what I would recommend is, uh, the two motions to staff authorization on the, the City Hall server and firewall, either option one or option two. Separate motion for any, uh, technology needs for, uh, the police department. Uh, we know that those monies would be from the technology. Uh, and from a staff perspective, again, we would mirror in that a City Hall. And then as our needs increase, we can always, um, actually, even less than five thousand, staff can, uh, just get a couple of different, um, items if need be.
I must have lost connection. I apologize.
Can you hear us?
Yes. I can now.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'll repeat it. Uh, I think, uh, what staff's looking for is, uh, like you said, Mr. Raffield, two motion, one for City Hall, either one or option two on the server and firewall, and for the police department, another motion. Uh, the staff is comfortable with, uh, same server as City Hall, and then as our needs develop, we can, um, add on as needed.
Fantastic. Mayor, will you entertain the motion, sir?
Uh, I am desperately seeking exactly, uh, uh, the information in our package. Um, go, go forward, Kirk.
Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we approve server option number two and firewall option number two for Jasper City Hall.
Second.
That's what we have, a motion and a second to approve, uh, server option number two and firewall option number two for City Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion, counsel, in recommending the gold support plan for ETC at three hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, I would entertain a motion at this point for the police department, but I would like to have that motion include that we will spend that out of the fund for the, the police, for the police department, whichever option that, uh, the council wants.
Mayor and counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we use funding from Technology Fund that is established in the city of Jasper to approve the same server recommendation option for Jasper Police Department. With the cost savings of twenty-two hundred dollars, I'd also like to include in that motion the approval of three workstations with Microsoft Office instead of the recommended two. I'd like to move that into the.
Well, you've heard the motion, counsel. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Mayor, I, I do want to note that the support plan automatically renews, so we'll need to calendar that for like January first of next year, just so that, uh, council can have a chance to evaluate whether you're happy or need something else at ETC, um, and that would give you time to, you know, to need something from and to.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I bet you Lindsay's already done that.
I have not. Uh, committee reports, uh, development committee, would be councilmembers, uh, Dr. Sonny Proctor and Kirk Raffield.
Other than the, uh, other mentioned, uh, things that we've covered on the agenda, um, not much to report from the committee. Uh, we do have a, uh, in our next meeting, we have a, uh, deadline set for, for consideration of, of our rezonings that will require some committee work prior to making any kind of recommendation, but other than that, sir, I believe we're good.
Thank you, sir, and Mr. Raffield. Anything to add?
In, in agreement with that, the work with CPO, I, I have high expectations for that. That is very exciting.
Thank you.
One other thing, Mayor, if I may, um, as you may recall, it may be hard to recall, but we do have a new economic development director. And, uh, the, um, plan was to, to initiate a strategic plan, um, which, uh, ultimately would bring the committee back together to discuss before presenting that to council. Um, because of the, uh, issues with our, um, pandemic, uh, we have uniformly, Becky Denny, myself, and Don Bogus have agreed that there be no time limits on that. Um, I do know that Mr. Suddles is working on a vision and mission for our economic development, uh, strategy. But bef, until such a time where we can convene to work on the strategic plan, that'll be, um, at least temporarily postponed. He does continue to work on, uh, on making connections with businesses and industries and other folks as appropriate in the, in the, in the county, so. Got that update just today.
Thank you, sir. Street and Parks Committee, that would be councilmembers Anne Snaby and John Faust. Anything to report?
Well, uh, go ahead, Ann.
I was just going to say, I think we're headed in the right direction, um, having Brendan and staff to continue just to move forward with what we discussed with our, uh, retreat and equipment, so when we do come out of this, that we can, we'll be ready to, uh, move forward.
Thank you. Uh, Administration Committee, um, councilmembers Jim Lundy and Anne Snaby.
I'd like to request that staff continue the review of the, uh, job descriptions, uh, and development of the employee evaluation tool. Our work tonight in approving the organization chart is, uh, was the, one of the first steps in this. Uh, I would hope that in the May meeting, we could present a full job description, uh, package, uh, and possibly the evaluation tool.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Snaby, do you have something to add to that?
No, I think, I think we're just moving right along, you know, taking a few steps at a time to, uh, continue to make progress with this.
Thank you. Water wastewater, we have councilmembers John Faust and Dr. Sonny Proctor. Would you want to bring that to us?
Uh, I'd just like to say thanks to David Hall and his staff for the diligent work. We appreciate all of the time and effort, and as you know, we're moving forward, and that's what we've been trying to do for a long time. I think it shows a lot. Uh, what do you got to say, Doc?
Well, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, I think there has been some communication recently, uh, with our, um, wastewater treatment loan and grant, um, the local folks have committed to possibly having us an answer, uh, this month on our USDA loan and grant, but, um, um, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Police and Fire Committee, councilmembers Kirk Raffield and Jim Lundy.
I have, uh, talked to both of our chiefs, and we have a report included in our package from each of them, um, staying plenty busy, uh, and, uh, thank them for the work that, that they've been doing during this pandemic.
Absolutely. And, uh, Kirk, anything to add to that?
Just in correlation with what's already been said, I, I would just like to note to the community and to those on our call right now, our meeting, is that all of our city employees, no matter what department they're in, they are taking that extra step. They're going the extra mile. They are protecting our community. They're doing a phenomenal job, uh, with modified schedules, modified work. They're doing everything that's been recommended. They're looking out for the public, and everyone's staying busy and providing for Jasper, so I'm very proud of each and every one of our employees. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Financial report, Brandon, would you like to bring this to us?
Yes, sir, I'll unmute myself. Um, I was able to get, uh, you, uh, a brief little, uh, financials. Uh, I know that there's been a lot of, um, issues and or uncertainties around COVID-19 and the financial implications of the city. Um, the local governments will typically and historically always fall behind any sort of, uh, volatility in the markets. Um, so I preface that with, with the fact that, uh, our revenues over expenditures, uh, was five seventy-three oh twenty-two, uh, so we are being mindful of our expenditures and making sure that, uh, having some revenues, uh, that lag behind, we're going to be careful about, uh, our expenditures. Uh, water receipts, uh, once again, this is the local on sales tax. Uh, it did come in, uh, as planned, as budgeted of one oh four two nine, so in regards to that revenue stream, it's holding steady. Uh, TAVT, um, comparison for last month is comparable of fifty-seven thirty-six, uh, five thousand seven hundred and some change. Uh, once again, as comparison, this still lags behind the nearly twenty-five thousand we received in, uh, March of twenty nineteen. So just being mindful that we're still being very conservative with some things. Um, Mr. Waters, who would be giving the development report after me, Mayor, he is not here. I told him not to worry about chiming in, he could give a development. However, in March, uh, even though a little of this started first week or two, uh, we produced four hundred dollars worth of building permits. So as Councilmember Raffield said, we are still working, we're hoping for business, uh, we're putting into practice social distancing, uh, and, uh, they've taken some, uh, and doing inspections in accordance with the guidelines of I C C. Uh, water and sewer fund, this will be another, uh, this is our business as a, uh, local government, so our revenues, uh, over expenditures, being mindful again, we're at about three twelve, uh, two seventy for the, um, the water receipts of six eight five seven thirteen for March, uh, sewer receipts, one seventeen eighty, leachate, which we're out, um, in the earlier measure, public and lease purchase, uh, that is down, um, from projections, uh, because of the rain. So that is another volatility of, uh, nearly sixty-eight, um, and the cost of construction aid receipt, the word was for, is at, uh, forty-six hundred. Uh, so by and large, uh, that's the financial report. Uh, in your package, you do have expenditure over five thousand, uh, as well as I think the, uh, SPOST, uh, proceeds in your package as well, but, uh, if not, just to make sure you understand too, um, those monies, uh, are from the twenty-fourteen, uh, and can be spent on asphalt and concrete, and in, in June thirty, in July one, twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty SPOST will pick up.
Thank you. And, uh, development report, um, is this something you want to bring to us?
I'll, I'll just defer to, to next month, or if, uh, as the committee said, uh, we're still operating, but, um, nothing by way of numbers to.
And I think the police report and the fire report are in our, uh, packets.
Correct, they are.
So we, we don't really have to go through those as they are.
Well, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do believe, uh, Chief Roper, uh, did decide, again, if y'all wanted to.
Oh, we want to hear from him.
Let's hear from Mr. Roper.
Let's, let's, uh, let's unmute you, Chief.
Perpetuity, Mr. Roper.
Thank you, sir.
I'll have to apologize upfront, Mayor and Counsel, I'm taking heavy fire on my position and that corner neighbor is, is shooting at me.
I would too, if I was your neighbor.
Well, hamburgers or hot dogs?
Uh, hamburgers, as a matter of fact. Before the month of March, city's fire department responded to a hundred calls. Those were two structural block outside the city, those were both, uh, responses with a camp, uh, no victim fires, two grass fires, seven motor vehicle accidents with injuries, seventy-one emergency medical responses, eighteen other calls. At the end of the month, three hundred and forty total, uh, four sets of plans for construction or renovation, up to fourteen in space.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks, Chief. So that concludes our meeting. Thank you. Thank you, thanks, Chief. So that concludes our meeting. If we have a.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Can I make one comment? First of all, Mayor, all the positive things that our staff and and we deserve going through what we're going through. I'm sure that you, major of the council, and and the public are aware that we're having a daily meeting with Piedmont Healthcare. The district mayor has been in attendance. I'm proud to say that Mayor Lawrence and City Manager Douglas and myself have attended each and every one of these conference calls. The other members of the of those calls include corporate people from Piedmont, Public Health, the county, Sheriff's Office, Good Samaritan Clinic. And I think we should be very proud of the proactive work that we did to at least try to get people to shelter in place at a very early stage. Hopefully, it's paying off. Our numbers have remained fairly constant in Dickens County, even though they have grown in Cherokee County. I will share you without divulging all the details publicly, but Piedmont does have a very detailed search plan for not only the Atlanta area, but also Dickens County. It involves staffing, equipment, personnel. And that conference call, I think, has demonstrated our willingness to work together to better our community and make it a safer place. And very proud of y'all's participation and Piedmont's participation and all the other local officials that are participating in that. So we just need to stay safe and carry on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I will also add to that, that Public Safety has about three meetings a week, and and has quite a large cast of people involved in that. I know Chief Roper and Chief Wubble both are on that. Brandon's on that call. And I'm on that call too. So it's good to see that there are other groups out here that are still meeting. My goal was to try to get all of those groups to go forward publicly so that the public at large can know about what is done. And and I feel like that would be good for them to hear in a comfort to many, to know.
Oh, lost you.
Well, I'm back.
There you are.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So so all that being said, if anyone has anything else, this will be the time to come forward.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, which is always in order as far as I'm concerned. A second? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Thank you.
David, all the rest of you.